Point now of the city initiated rezoning process and then we hope to go to council with the recommendation to sell the land to DHIC for development. In terms of communications, a press release went out on July 11th. We had extensive media coverage as well as we put it out through city social media sources, Next Door. We sent out letters. I believe the city sent letters to 109 and then we sent actually to the entire neighborhood adjacent to the property. So we sent 209 letters out. The neighborhood meeting was on July 29th. We had really good feedback. There's a summary in your package of the feedback from the neighborhood. And then we also went to the Concerned Citizens of Northeast Greensboro's August Meeting and presented there as well to about 40 people in attendance. We've been collecting an email list of folks who are interested in tagging along and seeing how we come through with the project. And very quickly, this rezoning request is currently zoned Commercial Medium for the previous use as a hotel. We are requesting CDRM 26, limited to 130 units. And the anticipated use is a two-phase multifamily development of 114 units, 54 of those restricted senior units and 60 family units. The site is excellent for housing development. We're looking forward to moving forward with this project.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions from the commissioners? Okay, I'm glad we... Thank you for telling us what it is. We really appreciate that. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for agenda item number Z2508007. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 2701 A North O Henry Boulevard from CM Commercial Medium to CDRM 26, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 26. To be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed CDRM 26 zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. And number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner, surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Sandra O'Connor, I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Ms. O'Connor. We will now take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 9 to 0. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The commissioners have asked for a five-minute break, so we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay? We'll be back at 10 till. Recording stopped. We're gonna s... Hello, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Please take their seat.
Uh-oh, we've got to be careful.
Okay. Thank you. I'd just like to remind you, please remember that you are sharing the designated time limits for speaking, and we want everyone tonight to feel fairly and evenly heard. Okay? So just... Anyhow, all right, here we go. Item PLP 25-31. PLP 25-31 again. They're all P... Okay. I'll just add in the correct numbers, okay? Because I know what they are.
I can do this quickly.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Item PLP 25-31, PLP 25-32, PLP 25-33, PLP 35... 25-34, PLP 25-35, and Z25-08001. An annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural, County GS3 Residential Single Family 3, County RS20 Residential Single Family, County RS30 Residential Single Family, County RS40 Residential Single Family, County CZ-L0 Conditional Zoning Limited Office, and CZGB Conditional Zoning General Business to City PUD Planned Unit Development and consideration of a required unified development plan for the properties identified as 6846 Banning Road, 5411 and 5411 ZZ Centerfield Road, 5790 Meadow Pond Court, 6784 Meadow View Drive, 3668, 3672, 3674, 3683, 3685, 3687, 3727, and 3634 Oak Ridge Road, 3136, 3144, 3148, 3200, 3203, 3204, 3209, 3215, 3219, 3220, 3221, and 3239 Pleasant Ridge Road, 7119 Rabbit Hollow Road, 6925 ZZ, 6935, 6955 ZZ, and 7036 Summerfield Road, 7631, 7650, and 7652 Debo Road, 7211 and 7217 ZZ Wyatt Drive, 5920 and 5930 Khaki Place, all of Khaki Place right of way, all of Banning Road right of way, a portion of Brook Bank Road right of way, a portion of Four Cedars Drive right of way, portions of Pleasant Ridge Road right of way, portions of Oak Ridge Road right of way, and portions of Interstate 73 right of way, 912.38 acres. And Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair Maggie.
I would not applaud.
This is the zoning map of the subject property and generally describing the property. It contains approximately 912.38 acres and is, again, generally described as being east and west of I-73, north and south of Oak Ridge Road, west of Summerfield and west of Summerfield Road. The request includes five annexations, so all of the PLP numbers that were read out, those are all annexation requests. All of the property that are associated with those annexation requests are incorporated into one zoning request. That zoning request is to go from County Agricultural, County RS3, which is residential single family, County RS20, which is another residential single-family zoning district, RS30, County RS40, County Conditional Zoning Limited Office, County Conditional Zoning General Business. And all of that to go is the request is to go to City Planned Unit Development. And also, there's a consideration of a unified development plan at the end. I'm going to describe around the property. I'm going to start on the northernmost block that you see and kind of describe down the east side, southwest, up back to the north. So it's a lengthy presentation, but that's generally how it's going to go. North of the request is Zone Summerfield Conditional Zoning Industrial, Summerfield Open Space Residential, Summerfield Industrial, Summerfield Residential, and Summerfield Agricultural. East of the request is zoned Summerfield Residential, Summerfield Industrial, Summerfield Business, Summerfield Conditional Zoning Business, and Summerfield Agricultural. South of the request is zoned City Parkland and Natural Resource Area, Summerfield Agricultural, Summerfield Residential, Summerfield Conditional Zoning Open Space Residential, and Summerfield Conditional Zoning Agricultural. And west of the request is zoned Summerfield Open Space Residential, Summerfield Residential, and Summerfield Agricultural. This is the aerial map. The subject property currently contains agricultural uses, single-family dwellings, special events facility, office use, and a subdivision clubhouse, which is technically an accessory use to an approved subdivision. North of the request contains single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, and a public park, and manufactured home park. East of the request contains an industrial use, a school, single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, another manufactured home park, and an overnight accommodations use. South of the request contains a school, single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, public parkland. West of the request contains single-family dwellings, I-73, and undeveloped land. So I'm going to describe the subject properties, and again, starting at the north and working our way around. This image shows the subject property from Debo Road, which is identified with annexation case number PLP 25-35. This is the subject property as seen from Khaki Place. This is annexation case number 25-34. This is the subject property as seen from Oak Ridge Road. This is case number 25-34. If you guys are okay with it, I'm not going to say which case number, the PLP numbers for all of them because it's a lot, but all annexation numbers are... cases are included in what I'm describing here. This is subject property as seen from Centerfield Road. This is subject property as seen from Pleasant Ridge Road. This is also a subject property as seen from Pleasant Ridge Road. This is subject property as seen from Summerfield Road. This is also a subject property as seen from Summerfield Road. Subject property as seen from Brook Bank Road. This is some subject property on Oak Ridge Road. And now going to adjacent land uses. This image shows a single-family dwelling located north of the request on Debo Road, zoned Summerfield RS30. This image is of undeveloped land as seen from I-73, and this is zoned Summerfield Industrial. This actually shows I-73, and this is east of the request. And there's no... The Summerfield zoning map does not show a zoning classification for this property. This is an example of the single-family dwellings located east of the request on Debo Road, zoned Summerfield RS30. This image shows undeveloped land located east of the request, zoned Summerfield RS, and Summerfield CZBN. BN is their business zoning district. This image shows a school located east of the request on Oak Ridge Road, zoned Summerfield This image shows examples of the single-family dwellings located east of the request, zoned Summerfield RS. This image shows a community park on Centerfield Road, located east of the request, zoned Summerfield Agricultural. And this is an example of the single-family dwellings located east of the request on Summerhill Drive, zoned Summerfield RS. This is an example of the single-family dwellings located east of the request on Pleasant Ridge Road. This is zoned Summerfield RS. And this is a bank that is located east of the request on Summerfield Road, zoned Summerfield BN. This is a shopping center located east of the request, zoned Summerfield CZBN. This is a single-family dwelling located east of the request, zoned Summerfield CZBN. This image shows manufactured home park located east of the request, zoned Summerfield Agricultural. This image shows overnight accommodations located east of the request, zoned Summerfield This image shows what appears to be a single-family dwelling with accessory retail use located east of the request on Pleasant Ridge Road, zoned Summerfield RS. This image shows an example of the single-family dwellings located south of the request on Meadow Point Court, zoned Summerfield RS. This image shows Greensboro Parkland located south of the request on Bunch Road, zoned Greensboro PNR. That's Parkland and Natural Resource Area. This image shows driveway for two single-family dwellings located south of the request on Banning Road, zoned Summerfield Agricultural. This image shows I-73 located west of the request. Again, no zoning is assigned to this property. This image shows an example of the single-family dwellings located west of the request on Catherine Louise Drive, zoned Summerfield OSR. This view is facing south on Debo Road. The subject property is on the left. This view is farther down Debo Road, and the subject property, again, on here is on the left. This view is facing southeast on Summerfield Road. The subject property is on the right. This is facing northwest on Summerfield Road. The subject property is on the left. This view is facing south on Pleasant Ridge Road. The subject property is on both sides of the road. And this is facing north on Pleasant Ridge Road. Again, the subject property is on both sides of the road. This is facing northeast on Brook Bank Road. The subject property is on both sides. And this is southwest on Brook Bank Road. The subject property is on both sides of the road. This is facing east on Oak Ridge Road. The subject property is on both sides of the road. And this is facing west on Oak Ridge Road. The subject property crosses the road here as well. These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. The applicant submitted a unified development plan that splits the property into multiple phases and also known as villages on the unified development plan. This zoning condition applies to phases 1, 2, and 3. This zoning condition applies to phases 4, 5, 9, and 10. And this condition applies to phases 6, 7, and 8. This is the representation of the unified development plan. Again, you can see all of the different villages, and there are 15 pages to this unified development plan, but this is the cover page which represents the entire thing. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map currently designates similar nearby properties as urban general and future land use map designates similar nearby properties as residential. The proposed original zoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's creating great places goal to have a citywide network of unique neighborhoods which offer residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices and the filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed planned unit development zoning district as condition is primarily intended to accommodate a broad mix of residential housing types and complementary non-residential land uses. The request also introduces innovative neighborhood design while preserving open space. The proposed original zoning request allows uses that are compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area, and care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, height, visual buffers, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to existing residential and agricultural uses on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. That was quite a presentation. If the applicant would like to come forward... First, does the commissioners have any questions at this point? Okay. If the applicant would come forward, you have up to 10 minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Tom Charrow, 230 North Elm Street. I'm here as the attorney for all of the applicants. We will do all of this as one presentation. I may speak at some time later this evening, but for now, I would just simply like to introduce Victor Dover, who is indisputably one of this country's leading urban planners.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Victor Dover. I'm a town planner and neighborhood designer with Dover Colan Partners and Coral Gables. First, where are the proposed villages? This map is simplified to show the darker green color showing the city limits of the city of Greensboro today. The Christopher Track, which was the one we brought to you earlier this year, is the one with the red... is the one with the red line around it right in the center of your screen. And now, as promised, we're bringing you the other ten villages. The city of Greensboro today extends right up to and along the southern edge of what we call the middle villages. So this is a simplified version of the map, and you can see those middle villages in the center of your screen stretching from west to east, from the interstate to Brook Bank Road, to Pleasant Ridge Road, to Summerfield Road. And that's tying together east and west and isolated part of the region. At the top of the screen, the north villages are the ones that are clustered around the interchange of line seventy-three and Oak Ridge Road.
Excuse me for one minute. Is there any way we can send someone to figure out where that noise is coming from and try to control it?
It's coming from the courtyard area. I don't know specifically where.
I'm used to worse than jackhammers.
Okay, okay.
If you can. Keep going. All right. Thanks, Luke. I'd just like to show you what's envisioned.
Thank you. You can go.
This is a legacy project, which is as much about conservation and stewardship as it is about real estate development. But we all know one of the delights out there is these long views across open spaces. And so we thought, what if, what if we could develop on part, but save the rest? In other words, fold up the development that would otherwise fill up the property and then move it into the right places artfully? And that way, the villages would be set within this vast green network of fields and forests and parks. That's the biggest of the big ideas. But just to be clear, first things first, the bottom line, this green space preservation I'm describing would also exceed all the applicable city, county, state, and federal requirements for protection of natural resources. But the approach that we're proposing here, it does more than that. It will allow us to accommodate the growth, but still keep this beautiful pasture green forever. This is one of the example villages. We call this one Edwards Park. What you can see in the map is that the development areas are tucked in closer together so that the best natural assets can remain whole and interconnected. That's the big idea. Now, there are more parts to this. That allows us to have an extensive trails and greenways system, building in a compact way and makes room for that. And the founders of the villages envision rotating the houses so that they face the trails and greenways with the front porches instead of their backsides. And then I'm working through this kind of collection of different kinds of green spaces that bind the network together. In addition to the fields and forests and parks I talked about before, there's also the idea that each village would have its own central gathering space, a village green or a neighborhood square. And then the last, but not least, is the green tree-lined streets. So the goal here is to make it more connected and meaningful for birds and butterflies and water quality and so on, but also for humans, because this would provide a kind of connectedness that's missing in this part of the metropolitan region today. This map is when we put all those components I just described together across the middle villages, and hope you can see why we call this starting with the green parts. Now, another key idea is that although the villages will have lots of different kinds of places to live and to work and to work from home, they'll also include other things to visit and walk to with short trips, like the coffee shop. And so our goal is to make sure that they're useful and interesting daily destinations within walking distance of every home. This is probably not sounding foreign to you because I'm describing the kinds of neighborhoods for which you, Greensboro, invented your traditional neighborhood or TN district. And that was our starting point. When we worked up the development standards that are in this unified development plan, we took our regulatory cues from the DNA in that ordinance. Another of the key ideas is to have the widest possible variety of housing. Now, it's natural that there will be some large houses on larger lots as if it's the prosperity that's marching across your region. But there will also be medium-sized homes and smaller homes and cottages that are on smaller clustered lots. And that would include single-family attached houses, also known as townhouses or rowhouses, that we think those can be used to create comfortable cozy streets, like the ones you might find in Savannah or Old Town Alexandria or in Old Salem. That smaller cottages in bungalow's format can be arranged with shared gardens. So we showed you that with the Christopher Village earlier this year. And then last, on the housing subject, two more things. The proposal is also to include some what we call mansion apartment buildings, which look like a house, but actually have four to eight units around their courtyard. Now, last, the city of Greensboro, like and every housing advocacy organization and A A R P strongly recommends accessory dwelling units or ADUs. And so we've doubled down on that idea. They're a great way to reinforce affordability and security and keep families together. We will also have apartments, and this has been much a subject of discussion over the years. Yes, we'll have some garden-style apartment buildings. We've planned these as street-friendly upgraded versions of the idea of garden apartments, and we would put them along those tree-lined streets, just like the townhouses or the houses facing with their front porches. The idea is when we arrange them in this way along traditional streets and traditional neighborhoods, the result will be much better than conventional apartment complexes. These two examples you've been seeing are from the Saunders Village, where Oak Ridge Road meets Interstate seventy-three. That's the triangle in the center of your screen, Saunders Village, which leads to another one of the key ideas. The thought is that the mixed uses are promoted throughout all the villages, but there's one village, Saunders Village, that is meant to be more of a shared center. This site's been zoned for a long time as a commercial shopping center site. So what we've done in the U D P is recast that so that now you have some shopping, like the grocery store and the retail and restaurants and so on, but also lodging and some workplaces and housing for a better balance. So I'm talking about the uses and where they would all be arranged. Let's talk about traffic. The P U D has a two-stage procedure for analyzing the traffic and the transportation matters. The initial transportation assessment is a thing that follows a lot of collaboration between Kittleson Engineers and Greensboro Zone D O T. And big picture, what that found was everything I've shown you is doable from a transportation point of view. But there's another stage to the procedure. At each phase, in each phase in the unified development plan as a village, at each phase, there would be a deeper analysis, a traditional traffic impact analysis or transportation impact study preceding development. And that's where that study will stipulate whatever the required actions are that will address transportation impacts at that time. The reason for this is that this is a thirty-year project with ten of those villages. And so we want to make sure that each of these transportation impact studies is responding to the real-world conditions, both with mobility and technology and workplaces and so on of that time. And this two-stage procedure allows us to do that. Finished by reminding that, like with Christopher, this is not just in keeping with the comprehensive plan, but doubles down on a lot of the key individual goals. And, you know, as a planner, I have to say, this project kind of shows what's possible when we design on a larger canvas. What we're seeking is a level of connectedness and coherence that piecemeal development would never allow. That's why it's as large as it is. So that's our summary. I look forward to answering your questions. Tom?
You have another minute, if you would like to.
I think the eight precious seconds.
Can we stop the clock because there was a minute on that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank. Thank you, Mr. Dover.
Good evening. I'm Carol Carter.
Can you pull your microphone down close to you?
I can, thank you. Standing on my tippy toes. My name is Carol Carter. I am a land use and transportation planner with over thirty years of experience. Speaking in favor, and I wanted to emphasize the amount of planning that has gone into this project. Normally, you don't see that as a zoning commission. You come in and you have proposed use and a map. But I don't recall I've had the opportunity to work with several times, and they are one of the best in the country, if not the best. And with the petitioner going forward and hiring a planning firm and having as many community meetings as they have is something unprecedented when you come before the zoning commission for the original zoning and annexation. And I believe that talks about the quality of this development.
You have fifty-three seconds, if you would like to.
We'll move on to keep your meeting going.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, there one more?
Oh, there's one more. Okay.
Gail Dunham, five-eight-zero-five, Snow Hill Drive, Summerfield. We've lived here twenty-two years. Where I'm coming from is we lived in the largest P D in the whole United States, and it was the fastest-growing area in the United States. I was on school board, my husband was on planning. We would pass three or four schools at a time with referendums because the growth was so terrific. You know what must, and Ken was on the planning board, but we saw some of the mistakes that were made along the way. So we've learned a lot from them, from that. And I just really want to say what a professional presentation this has been. And everyone from Greensboro that I have met that is into planning or zoning, whatever you're doing, everyone is so professional. It's important to know that there is no Greensboro forced zoning. This is a voluntary zoning. There's rumors right now in Summerfield that we are going to all be just swallowed up by Greensboro. And I'm sorry, I don't have another minute or two because I do have important things to say.
Well, we'll let you come back and speak at the rebuttal time first.
Okay.
Okay, so stay with us. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Next. Next. Those wishing to speak in opposition, you have ten shared total minutes. And we have a Jim Bennett and a Mr. Nash who's online. And we have Jonathan Ballinger who's here. Do we have Mr. Nash online? Are we ready for him? Just want to make certain.
Yes, Chair Megan.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address.
Jim Bennett, sixty-eight oh-one Banning Road. Okay? I want it known, I'm not for this subdivision. I'm not against it. Man owns property, he should be able to do with it what he wants. What I am asking is sixty-eight oh-one Banning, I have an easement across part of his property, which when y'all came out there on your hayride, y'all didn't see that. Okay? Mr. Couch, at that time, thought that Banning Road touched me, but it doesn't. For me to be able to do with my property the best use of it, either me or my family, Banning Road needs to touch my property. Like I say, I have an easement across it. My son has an easement across it. But if we are touched, that gives us time to use the best use of that land. Also want you to know, I'm surrounded by Armfield on the top, city of Greensboro on the bottom, which the town of, well, the city of Greensboro took part of that property from my family. My family's lived on that property for four generations. We want to keep it the way it is. Okay? I do not want to be in the city of Greensboro. I really didn't want to be in the city, in the town of Summerfield, but I really didn't have a choice. Okay? But I'm a country boy. That's all I am. And I'm asking y'all to add to the zoning that he connects Banning Road to my property and my son's property. As a condition, town of Summerfield did that when it was rezoned originally. So I don't see what a problem could be with that.
Thank you. Duly noted. Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? We have a John, a Mr. Nash on. Can we go to Mr. Nash online?
Mr. Megan.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Can you put your video on, please?
Well, I don't have a camera, so you're not going to see anything except a blank screen. Do you want me to proceed?
What? Oh, you don't have a camera? You don't have a camera? Okay.
You ready?
Yes, give us your name and address.
I'll take a few minutes, just a couple of comments. In general, I think.
First, give us your name and, first, give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's John Nash. I live in Henson Forest on Blue Aster Trace and have lived there for the last twelve years. I'm very familiar with Summerfield.
What is your address? What is your address?
You want the number, too?
Yes, please.
Six-three-two-nine Blue Aster Trace.
Thank you.
Okay. Two comments. One, I do have some concerns. I'm primarily concerned with the transportation issue when you consider Revolution Academy on the two-lane road. The amount of traffic even now is horrendous in the morning and afternoon from seventy-three all the way to two-twenty. And I'm not really sure how they're going to deal with that. I've heard words about roundabouts and things like that, but I think that's a major area that's probably going to have to be addressed as the different phases proceed. The main thing I wanted to mention today is about Johnson Village. If you look at your map, Johnson Village is nowhere near anything else. It's like a little island sitting on the west side of seventy-three. It's directly by Armfield subdivision, which has sixty houses right next to it. And I'd say the buffer is very minor between the development, if it occurs in that area, and this residential area. Directly across the street from Armfield is Henson Forest subdivision. So you have two major subdivisions on the west side of seventy-three that are not contiguous with the rest of the development, even though one map shows it, that's nothing but a culvert, between underneath seventy-three. And I think what will happen is, I think, when you bring a development into that area that's other than single-family residential, I think it's going to have a dramatic effect both on the traffic on that portion of Oak Ridge Road, as well as the value of the properties over there with those two subdivisions. So I would ask the planning board to segregate Johnson Village and make it a single-family residential, and then do all the other villages as they have proposed. But look at Johnson as a separate entity in that regard. And those are my comments.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Nash. I've written that down, and we'll get some answers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And then there was a Jonathan Ballinger who's here.
Who's here.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jonathan Ballinger. I live at six-one-one-two Ballinger Road, Greensboro. I'm not against the development of the property. We have a hundred and thirty acres north of this property on the Debo Road property and along I seventy-three is farmland. We want to keep it that way. I talked to Mr. Couch. He, I expressed my concern about where water and sewer would go. He said it would not go across our property. I just want to be assured of that by the city because I've not seen a site plan of any kind. And if I can be assured of that, I have no objection to anything. And he said he was not, we just do not want the city of Greensboro to use eminent domain to come across our farm later, and that's our main concern. And so they can. And so if they can assure us, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any more people in opposition who would like to speak? Okay. I just had one follow-up question just to ask staff. Mr. Ballinger's talking about water and sewer going, you know, and so forth. Would you explain what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do and what comes next?
Correct, right. I mean, basically, your role here is to look at the annexation question, whether or not city services can be provided to all these properties, and the zoning that allows the different uses that are proposed on there, the specific configuration of how that infrastructure is laid out, and how the development is done, is going to be dealt with through the technical review process and the site planning process. So we wouldn't be able to answer that question at this point in time.
So that comes after this. So, Mr. ... Okay. So now, let's see. Anybody else who wants to speak in opposition? Because there's four minutes left. Okay. So we will now do the rebuttal. The applicant has five minutes of rebuttal.
The applicant does not have a rebuttal, but we would like to defer to former mayor Dunham to come back.
There's this rumor that Greensboro is just going to gobble up everything in Summerfield. And it's important to know that there is no forced annexation. This is a voluntary annexation. It's a 30-year project. It's got an excellent plan to provide water and sewer, the important amenities, and I'm sure you're going to work through the traffic and some of these other things during that time because it's been very professional. It's been professional. So, and with the ... Right now, though, and one of the things to be careful, if you would please, to make sure there's continuity of zoning. We don't have that in Summerfield. In our UDO, you can put a gas station next to a single-family home. So continuity of zoning, I think, is going to be very important all over, and preserving the nature portion is going to be important in the roads. Right now, we have, in Summerfield, we do have new homes, but we have homes that have been there for 50 years, and they're very concerned if their home is going to be disrupted. But there's no forced annexation, and I'm sure you're going to have respect for the people that have been there for just as long. We really want to protect the farms. If the farms want to stay there, make sure that they have access to traffic or whatever they need. Keep that in mind because this is going to be maybe adjacent to that property. So we really want to protect the older homes and the farms and the existing homes also. Everything seemed, you're really professional. You seem to have this all together. I hope you have adequate staff. This is going to be a big project. Maybe you will have to add a couple more professionals, but we really appreciate your help in respecting our homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Terrell, I have a couple questions. I don't know. Yeah. I'm a little confused because Mr. Nash mentioned Brookbank Road and the Armfield development there and Hanson Farm Development, but he was talking about Johnson Village, which is on the other side of the interstate, and I don't see it touching Brookbank Road at all. I see Hanson Forest Drive is up around there. So I'm a little bit confused with his comment, you know, about that.
If we can get this back up. Johnson Village is, in fact, on the west side of Interstate 73.
Right. But he mentioned Brookbank Road as being...
Can you show them what we're...
The area that he was concerned about. And I remember seeing Henderson Farm and Armfield being on Brookbank, but Johnson's is to the west of the interstate, so...
That's right, Madam Chair. The Brookbank Road is this street here, which leads from Oak Ridge Road down this way through the Armfield subdivision. There is, perhaps where the confusion comes from, is that there's another portion of the original Armfield development, which is isolated to the west of Johnson Village and west of I-73. So that's where Hanson Forest Drive extends south. Johnson Village is the one westernmost here, so it's on the west side of I-73.
And the two developments he's talking about is way over on Brookbank Road at line, if you can just put your arrow on it. Yeah. They're over and there.
Here.
So that's why I was confused about...
It's a portion of the original Armfield development that started and then didn't get finished, and Mr. Couch bought the remnant property, which extends into what we're calling Armfield Village West and East here.
Okay. So they don't, where he was talking about does not touch the Johnson Village?
There is a single-family subdivision on the Long Cul-de-sac, you know, my idea.
But is that development? I don't think that development, is that Armfield, too?
That is also called Armfield.
Oh, I didn't know it went on that side.
A confusion.
Okay, I didn't realize it went on that side as well. Okay, thank you for the clarity in it. But is Hanson also over there?
So there's Hanson Farms, which is generally in this area along Brookbank Road, and Hanson Forest north of the interstate and Oak Ridge Road at the top left of your map.
Okay, thank you.
Both called Hanson.
Okay, I didn't look at that. Okay, thank you for that clarity. I appreciate that. Yeah, the Banning Road. I just wanted to ask one other thing. Mr. Terrell, Mr. Dover, are you aware of the easement on Banning Road?
We've been made aware of an easement. I don't have any independent information about what's recorded and what's not. That is a North Carolina Department of Transportation road. It's, I think your attorney will tell you this is not something that's resolved or addressed in a zoning context, but I can't put words in his mouth.
Mr. Terrell is correct, yes.
Thank you. I just want a clarity on that as well.
I'm David Couch, the property owner, and I'd just like to say that Mr. Bennett and I have spoken. Whether there's an easement or whether there isn't an easement, I trust him that, and I'm having that reviewed right now, but we have zero intention to cut his access off. And whatever we do there to improve Banning Road would take their needs into consideration and provide access there and improve that access. It's a dirt road or whatever else, and so when we improve it, we have zero intention to cut his access off in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any rebuttal in opposition? We have time now if anyone who's opposed to this would like to speak. You have five, up to five minutes. We have people online, too. Maybe Mr. Nash would like to say something else. Okay. Thank you. So any other questions from the commissioners before I close the public hearing? Okay. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments or thoughts to be shared by the commissioners before we make our motions?
I want to say thank you to the applicant. This is an incredible project being brought forward. Lots of thought, lots of energy, and to be able to do it and preserve as much open space, which is what Summerfield wants to try to keep. This plan does it. In addition, the time you spent educating everyone involved in this project, because it is complicated, and you went out of your way over what we've seen from other developers sometimes.